I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Tuesday, February 16th. The time is 9:01 a.m. I'd also like to let everybody know that this meeting will be livestreamed on Delaware County Indiana Government Facebook page. If you have any questions or comments, you can send them to commissioners@county.dell-dellaware.in.us. That's commissioners@co.dellaware.in.us. Steve, could you call the order, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on down to table business. Development agreement with WJHLLC, Country Village Property, Angie and Marta.
Good morning, Commissioners. I believe you took this under advisement for John Brook to review further.
Yes. John, we have to review this.
Yes, I did review this, and I think Marta made some changes to the agreement because the agreement as presented last time, I don't think was in the county's best interest, but I think there's been some revisions, correct, Marta?
I had sent you a copy of an another version of the agreement that was more in line with what the Commissioners have approved for other development agreements. And that one is it's just more typical and covers what needs to be covered from the Commissioner's standpoint. One thing I will say is that WJH has agreed to complete the street improvements and some drainage correction and repair improvements, which is both are very good. And that would be accomplished, could be accomplished, under the agreement that I had sent. And so, you know, if you have any other questions, we'll be happy to answer if we can.
Did the developers saw that latest agreement you put together and agreed with that, didn't they, Marta?
They have seen it. I don't know that they have agreed with it. Because after they saw it, that's when they presented the agreement that was considered at the last meeting.
John, I believe we have Mr. Connor with us that I believe he's with the development. Is that right, Marta?
Yes.
So he, he might be able to answer those questions for us, John.
All right, great.
Mr. Connor.
Good, good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's staying warm. It's been a nutty night, but for the most part, I would agree with what Marta suggested, everyone. We're we're just excited to get started. We've worked tirelessly, Marta, words in your mouth for the last several months trying to come to a win-win situation for Country Village and what appeared to have been some unfinished development improvements from back in the day that we've agreed to pay for and reflected in a development agreement. So yeah, we're on board. We're requesting approval today. We've we've got some contractual deadlines that we need to meet that's contingent on an approval today from a development agreement standpoint. So about Country Village and we're happy to be a part of the development agreement and make it come together.
And John.
It's my recommendation that the Commissioners approve the development agreement that Marta put together as for this because it's consistent with what the county has done in the past, and I think it's in the county's best interest to use that agreement as opposed to the revised one.
I'll make a motion. We remove it from the table.
Second.
I have a motion of second for removal. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement according to Marta's revisions.
Actually, yeah, you would, this agreement itself, and Mr. Connor needs to respond as to whether he would accept Marta's agreement or not, and not this agreement, because this is he sent an agreement which was response to the one Marta draft.
Okay.
Yeah, everyone, we're okay with it. I think admittedly, because we're a big corporation, our legal team probably over-lawyered Marta's draft, and I appreciate the concern from the County Commissioner's standpoint. I think that the big caveat was how do we, how do we treat the agreement if we don't ultimately buy the lots? But long-winded, everyone, we're okay with Marta's draft.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're all in agreement.
Yep. The motion would be to approve Marta's draft.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Marta's draft. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, for joining us today. Next, we'll move to approval of minutes for February 1st, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to contracts or agreements for approval. First off, we have the emergency declaration 2020-04. John?
Yes, this is the pandemic emergency draft, emergency declaration. The governor's pandemic emergency continues until March 1. And we would, we're now in the yellow category. I think we've only been the yellow category for a week, 10 days, maybe, maybe a little longer than that. It seems to be improving, but still, we still have quite a number of cases and still have a few deaths that are going on. And so this would be a continuation of the pandemic emergency until March 1, your next meeting.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan. Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Commissioner King, present.
Yes.
Could the Commissioners also approve the resolution for the emergency, for the weather emergency that was implemented last night? To keep the record clear.
Absolutely.
2021-05.
I'll make a motion. We approve emergency declaration 2021-005 for the weather.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have city, county, inner local agreement. Angie Moyer.
Commissioners, this interlocal agreement is very similar to what we have in place right now. Troy and Tommy and I have had meetings with the city and some roads have changed a little bit based on, and Troy and Tommy can speak up, but would work out better for plowing purposes and maintenance purposes. And then items 6, 7, and 8 are totally new to the agreement. And the Muncie Board of Public Works approved this last week at their meeting. So we just need your approval at this point.
John, you was able to look at this?
Yes, it is. It's very similar, not identical to other interlocal agreements we have with the city concerning this issue.
Okay.
I move.
Go ahead, Sherri.
I move we adopt the interlocal agreement as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to the 2021 Highway Department Annual Material Bids. Angie?
This is the same as we've been doing for years for advertising for bids for asphalt mixes, crushstone or sand and fuel. I'm not sure how many bids we have received. I believe Denise turned everything in to John Brook.
Yes, John has those. John, you want to go ahead and open those now?
Sure, here I I brought them home just in case. First one we have is from AgBest LLC. This is for looks like diesel and diesel fuel, oh, and gasoline too. There are bids for option 1 and option 2. Depending on the dates, the prices are set forth in the document itself that I got right here, so.
Okay.
One. Second one is E&amp;B paving for asphalt mixes. We have prices in here for different types of asphalt, like two minutes. And the different values and amounts there. I also have a bid here from Milestone Contractors of Richmond for asphalt mixes. They have their rates from their plant in Delville for various types of asphalt, like two minutes. Here's one from Irving Materials. This is for stone, riprap, fill sand, and gravel from Irving Materials. I have some other bids, but they're for construction projects.
And I'd like to make a note for the record. Otter's Office received a bid packet from Petroleum Traders, but it came in after the deadline, so I will need to return that bid packet unopened.
Yep, I have it right here and it's unopened.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we take all those bids under advisement, and I guess Angie will make a spreadsheet and bring to all of us.
Yes, I'll have that prepared and sent to you, and then we can make a recommendation at your next meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second to take bids under advisement. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have road paving projects. Angie Moyer?
Um, we advertised for two road projects. These were approved for community crossing funds. Eaton Wheeling Pike between Wheeling Avenue and Bridge 21 and Jonesboro Road slash Eaton Wheeling Pike from the Grant County Line to Wheeling Avenue. And John should have those packets.
I have two packets for those. First one is from First Brooks of Fort Wayne.
You should see two itemized proposals in there.
Jonesboro Road. Yeah, Jonesboro Road between Grant County Line and Wheeling Avenue, $390,369. 390, comma, 369. And then Eaton Wheeling Pike between Wheeling Avenue and Bridge 21, 407, comma, 571. Then there was an addendum 1, which is stone shoulder, two feet wide. That was part of, put in this as well. Second one is from E&amp;B Paving LLC. We're getting here, Jonesboro Road, Eaton Wheeling Pike between Grant County Line and Wheeling Avenue. The bid of E&amp;B is $466,980.20. 466, comma, 980.20. And then Eaton Wheeling Pike between Wheeling Avenue and Bridge 21, 496, comma, 460.05. Also add addendum number 1 in this as well. Those are the two I have for the road project, look like.
So Angie, do you want to look at those first?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion. We take both of those bids under advisement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Take both bids under advisement. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have bridge number 501, Bridge Rehab, Town Road, and Buck Creek. Angie?
This is also another community crossing project that we got awarded.
I have three bids on these. First one is from Duncan Robertson, Inc., Franklin, Indiana. Duncan Robertson's bid, 1, comma, 270, comma, 276.95. Next one is from Hoosier Pride Excavating of Springport, Indiana. Their bid is $1,181,912.73. 1, comma, 181, comma, 912.73. Third one is from Beatty Construction, Inc., of Foggtown, Indiana. Their bid is $1,335,859.45. 1, comma, 335, comma, 859.45.
Commissioners, I recommend we take this under advisement as well.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion of second to take this under advisement also. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have the Agreement for Employment of Delaware County Attorney. John, I believe this is your agreement. Has anything changed?
Nothing has changed. Prices and rates remain the same.
I move we adopt as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate working with all of you.
Johnny, you work great. We appreciate your office.
Next, we have the Howard E. Nightheart Company Incorporated, the GAP Service Agreement. John, have you looked this over?
I have. I don't see any issues with it.
Okay. Shannon, do you have any comments over?
I don't.
Sherri, do you?
No, we appreciate what Steve's doing with this company.
I'd entertain a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thanks, Steve.
We have no ordinances or resolutions. We'll move down to department heads and elected officials. Shannon, do you have anything today?
Yeah, do we have, does Joe have a agreement on there?
He does. He has an easement agreement.
We've got an easement agreement for Joe first.
Okay. I'll be real quick. This one is an easement along Tillotson on three parcels of property that the Commissioners recently acquired. There's an easement that has already been in place along the south and west sides of the jail property, and this one will extend north up to Cornbread Road. It is just for the trail project that's being installed up there.
Okay.
Move we adopt as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Shannon, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just real quick, the Fire Chiefs sent me a letter to they're trying to apply for FEMA grant to obtain new radios and other things, and they have requested a letter of our support. I did send it to both of you, I think, last week. You guys did reply back, but I went ahead and had Jenny put it on our letterhead, and I guess she'll probably stamp it and send it to me, and I can get it back to the Fire Chiefs Association if you guys are all good with that.
I'm with it.
Okay.
Appreciate you getting the opportunity. That's a great program.
Absolutely.
Hope they can get it.
You have anything else, Shannon?
That's all I have.
Sherri, do you have anything?
No, sir. Of course, we would like to thank everybody that worked last night to keep us safe and Tommy and the crew out there, Troy. I love him.
The highway crews been working very hard, 12 and 14-hour shifts, and we appreciate you guys and everything you do. I know you guys are getting tired, and the four guys sitting there in the EOC that you see have been up all night also keeping things running, so we just, we appreciate all you guys. I know Dispatch is doing a good job and we've got a good bunch of employees, and I appreciate all their hard work.
John, you guys, you guys have anything from the EOC room?
Good morning, Commissioners. No, I think everything seems to be working pretty smooth. I know the highway guys are out tucking up some roads and getting those cleared off. Now it's daylight out. City streets are doing the same thing, so everybody worked well last night. The county highway guy stepped in and helped out with some emergency calls out in the county. Plowing roads too, and so we appreciate them, and we'll continue to work with them throughout the day, and if we get any more snow this, towards the end of the week, we'll we'll definitely work with these guys and make sure they have what they need from us and, and work together through it all.
Thanks, John. Mike, do you have anything from EMS side?
The only thing we did last night, so everybody stepped up to the plate and showed up and got snowy.
Mike did call in extra people, so he had some extra trucks and plow trucks and all that. We appreciate everybody's help and care.
Yep, like Mr. Reagan and Henry said, we appreciate, we appreciate all you guys and all the hard work that you've done during the storm and also the end damage. So we'll move on to 911 Director Paul Singleton. Do you have anything?
I do not, other than calls are coming in and we're getting them dispatched, and everybody's responding as normal as they can.
I appreciate everything you guys do also, Paul.
Thank you.
Tommy, Troy, do you guys have anything from the highway side? You just, you just muted yourself, Tommy.
We were on. I'm sorry. Yeah, everything is good out here. The roads are getting better. Guys did a great job last night. They left us pretty good this morning. We got a lot of snow. I think some places, we may have got up to 12 or 13 inches. But the roads are a lot better right now. We're gonna clean them up today, but the nice shift did a great job working in really bad conditions. And thanks to everybody for working with us last night, too. It was, it was good. The drivers came in about the radios. They were really happy to have the radios in the truck. And it, it worked out well.
Shannon, do you have anything for Tommy or Troy?
No, I just, again, I appreciate you guys and anything we can do to help with the snow.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. We've got a bunch of good guys out here. I mean, I'm amazed at what they done last night in the conditions, so it's pretty easy when you got good workers, and I appreciate you.
And Sherri, do you have any comments?
No, I just appreciate it. And did you get enough salt? Were you pretty good on the salt?
Yeah, and we're still, they still owe us like 125 ton, and so it's gonna probably make us right at 300 in the barn. And we can replenish again hopefully tomorrow before this Thursday hits, and we should go make it through that meeting just fine.
Like the other Commissioners, I want to say thank you for everything you guys do. A lot of people don't understand that your drivers get out there in the whiteout, how dangerous it actually is, so we appreciate you and ask for everybody to pray for you guys when you guys are out there working.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that very, very much.
I appreciate it.
Tell the guys, Tommy, we really, really appreciate them.
Absolutely, I definitely will, and I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Angie, do you have anything? I think she said no. You're muted.
Sorry, no, I do not. Thank you, though.
Okay. Steve, do you have anything from the auditor side that you need to bring up?
No, I've got two or three people here getting payroll processed, but when they get done, I'm sending them home.
Okay.
James, I'd like to give a shout out to Charlie Walker, our maintenance superintendent. He's covering three buildings now for us and with his staff, and we appreciate what all they're doing so we can go to work tomorrow.
Absolutely. Sherri, it's, it's a team that gets everything done here for the county. It's not just one individual. We do everything as a team, and that's one thing that makes me proud to be a Commissioner with you and Shannon Henry. Marta, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Just a couple of announcements.
Yes, um, I do. Just a couple of announcements. Um, one is that, um, my office, the Plan Commission Office, has put together a, sort of a quick and simple survey to collect input on solar energy. And we'll be posting that on our website and the county's website for people to, um, fill out and give us input on the issue of solar. Um, the other thing is, uh, that, uh, we, my office is working, uh, on a joint project with several partners, the city, the county, the Muncie Action Plan and Next Muncie, to create a new comprehensive land use plan for Muncie and Delaware County and also a strategic investment plan. And, uh, we will be creating a separate website for that project um, in order to distribute information and collect input so that, uh, I think we'll be able to announce what that website address is at the next commissioners' meeting. And we'll be, um, sending that out to anybody and everybody, uh, in order to get really good input into those, uh, two plans. So that's it.
Thank you, Marta. Appreciate it. Sherri, I apologize that I, I might have cut you off there toward the end. Did you have something else that you wanted to say?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Um, Steve, and tell your girls, we appreciate them coming in to do the payroll and, uh, please be safe on the way home.
I will.
Next, we have payment of claims an amount of $1,679,729.27.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for payment of claim. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. And last, we have, uh, public comments, questions. Uh, John, can you forward all of those, if you have any, to the commissioners so we can get those answered to the public?
Right now, I have, uh, on the Facebook page, I have a compliment from Troy Inkey for the Highway Department. What a great job they're doing. Also a comment from Jeff Stanley, Chief Deputy. Uh, the Sheriff's Office wanted to thank the Highway Department to, for the assistance with some stranded motorists last night. Um, and then some other compliments from Shelley Lacy and Denise Smith to everyone. That's all I have.
All right. Like I said, it's, it's great working with Delaware County because everybody works as a team. It's not one individual. It's, it's a team that does everything here and I appreciate every last one of yous and I'm sure both of the other two commissioners appreciate everyone also. With that being said, Sherri, do you have anything else?
Yeah, yes. I, I think we need to remind the people that our new Delaware County Justice Rehab Lotation Center is opening tomorrow. And, um, the courts are back up and running. And, uh, I want to push the, uh, city bus mitts for providing Route 17 that goes directly out there at 8:30 from the downtown. And then, um, in 10 minutes you're there and it drops you off right at the front door. So it's, it's only on a 180 day trial, so we really need this route. And, um, I really appreciate mitts stepping up, so, um, we need to ride the bus and leave the driving to them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Shannon, do you have anything else before we, uh, get a motion to recess?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I entertain a motion recess then.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to recess. Steve, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Going to recess. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.